The Lakeside Residential District was formed and the talk about it, these are verbatim words coming right out of what you guys wrote or whoever wrote this, wrote down in the documents. Preserve and protect the natural qualities of Cato Township. Protect all of the township lakes. Preserve the quality of Tamarack and Townline Lakes. The purpose of the Lakeside Residential District is to differentiate between rural residential and neighborhood residential. Land uses with the properties on Tamarack and Tamarack and Townline Lake are all governed by that. And we're seeing right now that we're not seeing any kind of differentiation between the rural side of the road and the lakefront side of the road. So I'm not sure you're following what you're intended to do with the Lakeside Residential District. Part of this is also, and these come right out of, this is again off of the master plan, appropriate land use, most appreci-- uh, sorry. Can't read male writing. Most appropriately used for Lakeside Residential District include residential homes and cottages. There's no mention of camping. And then in the action plan that you have on the master plan, lakes are an essential component to life in Cato Township. It attracts people to live and work here and helps drive the local economy. And I don't, I mean, these are coming right out of your master plan that you have got online and you are telling us to believe in, but yet to go and say, oh, by the way, we're just gonna let people camp all over the place and portage johns here and there and drunkenness and whatever else goes on. I, I, the thing doesn't make, it makes me not wanna, it doesn't sense. Then I go to page forty-nine of the fifty-eight pages of the master plan and I find where I, you, and you have an actual Cato Township zoning ordinance that the last adjustment to it was in twenty-twenty-two. This is your main zoning ordinance. It lists everything from dirty bookstores to God knows what. It's got, it lists car washes, everything. Chapter one, table of contents. Section one oh-one, purpose of zoning ordinance. Simple enough. There's an A and there's a B. Subset B, this ordinance is adopted with reasonable consideration. Among the other things of the character of each district is particular suitability for particular uses, the conservation of property values and natural resources. Number one thing you guys adopted and wrote back in two thousand and one, and I mean, I don't know what you did with the letter that my real estate agent, we sent it to you, but I mean, this is letter from the guy that sold the house to us. He specializes in lakefront properties. And it just goes on and on about how he says, "I can confidently state the presence of unregulated camping and noisy gatherings on vacant land, especially next to lakefront properties, has the potential to negatively affect property values. Buyers are looking for quiet, peaceful, lakefront living, are less likely to consider these homes near such disturbances which can ultimately harm the marketability and desirability of the entire neighborhood." Period. And that to me in a nutshell says, you need to rethink this. Thank you.
I'm Erin McBarb, Cato Township, Hottown Township. And I, I just have a request, having just now learning of this situation. I would, I would really appreciate some history, a little timeline as to what is going on, where did it start, who brought it up, and what are, what are the plans? I'd like to know what this meeting's all about and why there's dissension and where we're going with this. It's Townline Lake, it's Tamarack Lake, it's Cato Township, it's other townships. And I'd just like to know what's going on, if you don't mind.
Anybody else?
I guess I'd just like to restate the communication. I understand you gentlemen take time out of your lives to help the community. We appreciate that.
Your name is?
Frank Urschel.
Okay.
But somehow we have enough people in this room that didn't get communications. And I'm not a Facebook person. If we got a letter, I probably read it. I don't remember getting a letter in the mail. It's just difficult. We put our whole lives in this lake. I've been there for almost fifty years. And to watch it degrade is very difficult. So I, I wish that you could reconsider some of the verbiage, some of the attention that you're thinking of doing. And think about everybody that lives on the lakes and in the township. Thank you.
Phil, Phil enter. I just wonder what is the benefit of changing this ordinance to the township?
Luanne Kester, I'm wondering if you did go ahead and, and put this through where mobile homes, trailers can be on people's lots with permits. Who is going to be policing that? Who's going to be checking to see if people are out on time? Sounds like a kind of a timely, costly venture, just doing that.
I'd like to chat, I had a Eric Gallay, G-A-L-L. Where would be the part where several people have asked the same question, but there's no, no return of an answer, like, why would there be a change? Why would you wanna allow camping? What's, what is the why?
This isn't--
I'm asking, that's what I'm asking. I'm asking when, when can we expect an answer? I'm hearing everyone say the same thing.
We're gonna talk about this tonight, but we're just getting public comments right now as far as on this particular ordinance, so.
Okay, well, I'm just asking clarification. We went through comments, you said this was the hearing part, so I'm trying to find out. I don't wanna be redundant on the same question over and over and over. Just wanted to know that we're actually gonna get some answers on it. I would like to comment a little bit more on the property value part. I mean, there is property value to consider. It's not really, you know, the township or the board's responsibility to worry about one property value over another, but just as a whole, if you look at, if you're gonna build a neighborhood, if you want to pour money into schools, so my home is, I, sometimes I go there all the time in the winter time, but it's really a second home. So that's a blessing, but I still pay taxes to the school. I could pay more than people that actually live here. So if you allow someone to camp, like if you make it to like, oh, I can go there and I can do this and this is my cottage for, it sounds great, right? Someone can throw a trailer on there for two grand or for thirty grand, right? Because who's gonna regulate what kind of trailer comes on there? What's that gonna do to your fellow neighbors? But it doesn't do anything for the community. Nothing, like zero. There's no, all it does is bring money in for the weekend to possibly the bar, maybe, not everyone drinks, but maybe they're just there to have a good time, go fishing. But it's not actually bringing anything positive to the community of lasting power, right? You're not bringing it. I pay money into the school system. Period. I'll pay money into the school system in town as well. A trailer doesn't do that. And it's gonna really negatively affect everyone around it. And, and you're affecting communities that are attached to it. It's not, it's too big of an issue to just have one township dictate. It should be more regulated by all of the townships that surround these lakes. It should be a cumulative residential ordinance, in my opinion. It'd be nice to walk around the lake and not have to worry about getting involved with theirs. Or when you're not here, you know, having yourself be safe.
Amen.
Thank you.
Judy Hazel again, Honey Moon Heights Board Association. We, I represent the board tonight and we have eight hundred and one building lots, nine lakefront parks, sixteen backlot parks in the Honey Moon Heights subdivision. That's quite a few. But I would like to say something similar to what Eric did about the safety of our community. When you bring in, when you open this up to camping, let me back up. When we bought our cottage, I did a sexual offender search to see who was in the area. When I did that several years ago, there were fourteen people. Now, if you do searches in the area on this type of thing, criminal background checks and stuff, which I actually use to do for a living, you will find others because they can purchase these lots at a very low price and they can't afford their felons. It's hard to buy a home, so they will buy a trailer and put it on their lot. Camping trailer, any trailer, they'll put it on there. And so in our backlots, we already wrestle with this some because it's low income housing considered a lot, basically. And so that brings in big safety concerns. When you open up to this even further past the two weeks of camping and you say, okay, now anybody can, whatever, then you're gonna find more, I don't wanna say anything against low income, but more like your felons and, and people that can't buy homes. Low in space, low, our own daughter couldn't buy a home. She'd jump at a chance to put a trailer on a lot. So you're, 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 you're just asking for trouble. So I just wanted to bring that safety factor up because we work hard at HHOA to assure that all our neighbors, we try to make it a safe neighborhood and watch out for one another and also a clean neighborhood. And I, one of the neighbors who works in town here wanted me to say tonight that she and her husband bought a few years back a home here to live in around the clock. It's a retirement home and she also does not support this. She just wanted me, I'm not gonna say her name, but she wanted me to throw that out there. She's on committees with, in the area of the county and whatever, but she, she wanted that known too, that that's, that's just not appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
By the way, we forwarded the Honey Moon Heights letter to you, so you should have, I hope, in your email. And then you should have my letter from my realtor that was sent to Brandy, but you don't, you don't read any of those at this meeting. I mean, you read my other letters before, I just didn't know. That's up to you.
Okay, so. We do have some letters that were sent to us. And some of you individuals are here today. And I guess I'm not sure whether you want to read them or not, but I guess it's up, I guess we'll go through those as a, as a commission. We're not the board, we're not Cato Township Board, we're the Cato Township Planning Commission, so just so you all know. We received one letter from Catherine Oguld. Can you read that quickly?
My husband, Robert, Lou and I have concerns over the following issues. One, having people camping nearby and breaking the temporary short-term district regulations. Number two, dogs off leash, off their leash entering our property, growling at us and defacing it. Number three, motorhomes parked in yards for extended periods of time while not in use. Number four, campers with people living illegally for long periods of time on Lake Road near Cutler Road with junkier cars parked on the same property both sides of the road. Number five, rundown trailer homes on both Lake Road and Cutler Road that bring down the value of other properties nearby. Number six, spearfishing late at night on weekends with people shining spotlights into our bedrooms and living room. Thanks for your long and sincere Catherine and Robert Louisville.
So as part of the public comments, we have that from Catherine and Robert Oguld. The next one we have is a letter from Kurt and Lisa Becker.
Our names are Kurt and Lisa Becker. We own a home on the lakefront of Townline Lake in Cato Township. As homeowners on the lake, we strongly oppose the Lakeside Residential District that is being proposed. We feel this will negatively affect the lakeshore of the lake, especially the people who have homes near those lots that may have trailers in them. Especially if they want up to three trailers of portage johns there and a generator, a generator running up to twelve hours a day. Nobody wants to hear that. And then the idea of a storage buildings on the lakefront lots, nobody would want that along the lakeshore. I've spoken to many people from the lake, every one of them asked me, where is this idea coming from? Now, the single person from the lake that I've spoken with think that this is a good idea at all. Every person that I've spoken with is opposed to this, opposed to this. This proposal will negatively affect property values, especially those in close vicinity to the lots where the campers will be. We urge the planning commission members to please carefully think this through and vote this down. Thank you, Kurt and Lisa Becker.
We also have an email from Judy Hazel. And Judy, you are here tonight, you read some of this.
Some of it.
You asked to read the rest of it. Do you wanna read it or what?
You can read it if you want.
Okay. Go ahead, Joe.
Cato Township, recently placed on Facebook was a document which appears to make changes to the Lakeside Residential District. First, we would like to understand who decided that this needed to be done. Next, I would say in making changes such as these, it would see that you would send out letters to lot owners explaining that this draft has been made and that you would be accepting feedback on the proposal at the Cato Township meeting. In review of the document, it is concerning that you are proposing that a person can camp temporarily or short-term or long-term outside of a designated recreational vehicle park or campground. This presents an invitation for people to camp and party next to residential homeowners. What is even more concerning is that you are suggesting generators can be using on the zoning lots for camping purposes. Your proposal also suggests that adequate toilet facilities can be placed on the lots. What are you doing, what you are doing is creating campgrounds on residential lots. We are writing against this proposal on behalf of ourselves as lot owners in Honey Moon Heights, which is residential subdivision in Cato Township. In the late nineteen fifties, a group of individuals formed a company known as the Townline Land Company. Their endeavor was to develop a subdivision on the north shores of Townline Lake. This subdivision was named Honey Moon Heights. Subdivision consists of eight hundred and one building lots, nine lakefront parks, and sixteen backlot parks. Lake Shore Drive and Channel Drive and Honey Moon Drive follow the lakeshore. Roads leading into the subdivision are Caroline from the east, Schmied from the west, Elm, Cherry, Birch, and Hickory from the north. The Townline Land Company did all the plat, planning, constructed approximately seven miles of roads with all the parks, established the building restrictions and created Honey Moon Heights Owners Association. Save the lots was function of the Townline Land Company. In the early nineteen sixties, the Townline Land Company dissolved, giving the Honey Moon Heights Owners Association all rights and responsibilities for future operations and development of the subdivision. The Honey Moon Heights Association follows the bylaws of the association, which does allow a stay in a camper if you are building a home or upgrading a home and you have no choice but to stay in a camper during that time, displaying building permits. HHOA also allows for fourteen days out of three hundred and sixty-five of the year for a lot owner to place a camper on their lot and allow guests to camp. Honey Moon Heights Board has been represented by an attorney over violation to our bylaws and recently won in court a case to remove trailers from a lot as they were in violation of our bylaws. We have not had time to get a copy of the court's outcome to present to you as our lawyer was not available today, but we should have that in a couple of days. The lot owners of Honey Moon Heights and the board try to keep the subdivision safe, also free of blight to keep property values up. If you allow regular camping, property value will go down and you will hurt those who own property. In addition, we have several sex offenders in Cato Township and at least ten around or near HHOA. So we at HHOA desire to keep this from increasing. You make lots available for camping, you will bring in felons who cannot afford to live elsewhere but in a trailer, and soon we will be unsafe and trashed. In addition to felons, you will also see others who are very low income moving into HHOA. From our experience in the subdivision, those who are low income do not usually keep up their properties. This is not true for all, but several in backlots. Let's not forget that the individual whose trailer HHOA moved off the lot was a felon with current ties to a meth lab. In addition, HHOA has had a meth lab pop up in the past. It's since burned down. We know there have been shootings in Schmied Park over the past years. We wish it not, we wish to not allow this camping situation in HHOA, which we see to bring large unsafe problems. With this said, we very much oppose what you are doing to our rights and freedoms as property owners in HHOA, Cato Township. More importantly, our safety in Cato. Should you feel the need to continue on what seems to be a private Cato Township endeavor, we ask that you exclude Honey Moon Heights Owners subdivision in your proposal. Legally, we believe you will see that, so that you cannot make our subdivision a place of camping and portage johns. HHOA has won one court case and we really would not like to take Cato to court as well over this proposal. Sincerely, Stuart and Judy Hazel.
So as a follow-up, Judy, I think, or I think Ron, somebody said something about a letter was sent to me from your attorney. I've not received that letter.
Not from the attorney.
So I mean, that comment was made earlier. I've been saying, I mean, I've been watching my emails here this evening, today, these last days, I still haven't received it, so.
They just forwarded--
They forwarded it to me, I just sent it to you from my email.
It was the Honey Moon Heights Board chair.
Okay, so it's not an attorney, that's Kurt though, right?
Yeah.
Which we already read, correct?
No. He's representing the board as the board chair in his letter.
Well, it says, "My name is Kurt Becker." The one who sent me, Ron, is named Kurt Becker. I'm the president of the board.
That's it.
Like it starts out the same way. Okay, so I'll read this one. This got, just gave to me at six thirty-five P.M. Uh, "My name is, uh, to the Cato Township Planning Commission, Phil Mark Chairman. My name is Kurt Becker. I'm the president of the Board of Governors for the Honey Moon Heights Association, HHOA. Byron Creek Properties. The hole, the hole on the north side of Townline Lake that is in Cato Township is Honey Moon Heights. We as a board only became aware of this draft for Lakeside Residential District two days ago. We, the Board of Governors for HHOA feel as though we should have been extended a courtesy of being notified and consulted of this proposal in advance. In the late nineteen fifties, Honey Moon Heights was established as a residential subdivision and early nineteen sixties, the rights and responsibilities for future operations and development of the subdivision was turned over to Honey Moon Heights Association. We, the Board of HHOA, feel that there's no circumstances should campers and motor, should campers and motorhomes be permitted in a residential area, other than fourteen days per calendar year that is now allowed, or by permission of the HHO, O-Board, HHOA Board for short-term use in the case of construction or runoff. Honey Moon Heights is a residential subdivision and we want it to stay that way. If the people want to camp at Townline Lake, there's Ford Park, Ford Lincoln Park is available for a short-term camping, Bass Beach Campground is for seasonal camping. I have read the proposal multiple times, as well as the board members. We see no benefit from this proposal at all. Therefore, the Board of Governors of Honey Moon Heights has held a vote and I, as president of the Board of Honey Moon Heights Owner Association, we ask on behalf of the board to notify the Cato Township Planning Commission of our disapproval of this proposal. We object to this proposal for the, in the strongest possible terms. Thank you for your consideration, the Board of Governors for Honey Moon Heights Association." John Vander Plank also sent an email. Jake, if you can read that one.
Uh, this email, like Phil says, from John Verplank. "I heard there's a proposed planning zoning meeting tomorrow evening to discuss the proposed LR zoning. Unfortunately, I cannot make the meeting, but wanted to offer my opinion, thoughts on the matter. First of all, is the township's goal to reduce property values and lower the quality of lake living? If so, this LR zoning district should do the trick. Have you been to Schmied Park on Townline Lake, Velveteer Township? If not, please do so and you will get a snapshot of what seasonal campsites, trailers on vacant lots look like. Schmied Park is embarrassing and gross with campers, abandoned vehicles, stockade fences, and burned down trailers. I'm assuming the planning department is getting pressure from people to utilize these vacant lots, but I can assure you that they will get homes built on them when the area cleans up and people feel it is a safe and clean area worthy of constructing a cottage or home. Unfortunately, the township and county should focus on blight as future homes and cottages would prop up neighborhoods' values, whereas transient campers all over vacant lots will not. Where will they dump sewage? Will there be portage johns all over? There is a reason why an ordinance like this was not, was not original, included in the zoning ordinance. This is a death sentence to property values and should not be considered. Please work on codifying a blight ordinance and focus on something to improve the area. We do not need more Cousin Eddys here. The shitter is already full of them. Please go look at the disaster called Schmied Park. It is third world. Regards, John Verplank."
I also received an email from Greg Sims. And Greg, you sent a little short video clip.
Yeah, so I actually sent it the wrong day. I had this whole meeting thing messed up, so I sent it from Monday, but--
I understand, I got it. So I mean, and what Greg referred to earlier was a picture like this, and this is looking off his, his deck as far as what comes to that. It's a little short clip that just kind of pans across his deck, across the lake, and then obviously comes to this, this way in the video, correct?
Correct.
So just as of record.
Thank you.
Did he add to that then, more? No?
No, I said it earlier.
Yeah, understood.
Thank you.
And then I also received an email from Ron Buckholz. And Ron, you referred to this email earlier, and it's from Kevin Erwin. And would you like to read that or you want me to read it?
I can read it.
Okay.
Dear Township Board Members, I hope this message finds you well. I'm writing to bring to your attention a matter concerning two adjoining vacant lots located next to sixty-one twenty-four West Cutler Road, Lakeview, Michigan, four eight eight five zero. I recently assisted Ron and Patricia Buckholz in purchasing this lakefront property. These lots, which are situated on All Sports Lake, have recently been used as campsite by the owner's granddaughter during the summer of twenty-twenty-four. Unfortunately, during that time, there have been several parties and loud activities occurring on the property, which has caused significant disruption to the surrounding residents, particularly those who own lakefront homes. The noise, as well as the presence of campers, has not only affected the enjoyment of the property, but has also raised concerns regarding the potential impact on property values in the area. As a professional in real estate, I can confidently state that the presence of unregulated camping and noisy gatherings on vacant land, especially next to lakefront properties, has the potential to negatively affect property values. Buyers looking for quiet, peaceful, lakefront living are less likely to consider homes near such disturbances which can ultimately harm the marketability and desirability of the entire neighborhood. I respectfully request that the township consider addressing this issue by implementing clear guidelines and regulations on the use of vacant lots, particularly those adjacent to residential properties on the lake. It is important to maintain the integrity of our community and ensure that all residents are able to enjoy their properties without disruption. Thank you for your attentions in this matter. I'm happy to discuss this further if needed and look forward to your response."
So those are the letters that we received, and then we received some public comments here tonight. And I guess before I close, public comments, is there any other comments that you all wanna make before we, as a commission, talk about this ordinance? Just one last topic, yes?
Just seemed like there's a serious problem with notification of residents.
Just seems like there's a serious problem with notification of residents. In how you're doing, just a statement. Many people here tonight have only learned of this in the last couple of days.
Anybody else? So I'm gonna close public comments for the Lakeside Residential Ordinance, located by. So as a commission, we need to talk about this. I guess I'm gonna put you on the spot, Ron.
I, so I missed last meeting.
No, I said, you hold on. I guess I want you to answer a question. And some of us was talking a little bit ahead of time, though, but. How did we come up with Lakeside Residential?
From our master plan.
So as a master plan, I mean, why did we use the master plan?
Because it was outdated.
By many years, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, we were looking at.
Twenty fifteen was the last time we did our master plan. So with that being said, how did we even come up with a Lakeside Residential?
We had plenty of residents come and say, hey, lakefront residential, me being one of them living on a lake, is a little bit different than.
You live on a lake?
I do live on a lake. In Cato Township. You guys always forget about Lake Forest, but it exists. Lake Forest, right. Anyway, that's why we, as a commission, said, oh, we should add lakefront residential. And I thought, that's what our meeting tonight was for, for the public hearing, for nineteen through whatever. And the other parts, which I get, got included, were not part of our discussion today. We're not adding that to the, that was a rough draft given to us. And so we gave that out to you guys to see. Just a rough draft, nothing getting passed or approved today. I'm not sure where that miscommunication started. Dave, I was, I was gone last meeting. I was, I was out of the state for twenty-some days. But even watching, thank you so much for the videos, because I can be gone and still be apprised. Nowhere during that meeting did it look like any of what we're discussing in the subsection three, that we don't have numbers assigned. None of that was gonna get discussed and approved today. That was just a rough draft.
And I'll let you speak here more in a little bit, but I'm gonna go to you, Dave, next. Okay? I'll put you on the spot. So, how, how do we, I mean, we have a group of public here and they're, I, I, there's lots of questions out there about, you know, how, how, why did they, why did they get notified? Do you think they've been notified?
Can I, can I think back on what you asked?
Absolutely.
Okay. So to go back to the publics, one and all, on September eleventh, Mr. Buchholz came, Buckholz came to our planning commission meeting when we had an attorney here. And this is right off of our minutes. It says, Mr. Buckholz spoke about concerns regarding the township's lack of clarity or regulation within the zoning ordinance, section three point two eight, on parking or camping on vacant, unimproved lakefront lots. Mr. Buckholz asked that the planning commission take immediate action on.